Good evening, everybody in the audience and at home. Welcome to our monthly meeting for March. This is our monthly meeting where we hear from our departments and boards and our neighboring municipalities and the trustees report out on the progress that they're making. If we could have a roll call, please.
They are fully.
Here.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trusty Ozzy.
Here.
Trusty Fatty.
Here.
Trusty Starbuck.
Here.
First opportunity to request to vote or modify to vote to modify or add agenda items, anything we missed? Okay. Announcements, I have a couple and Laura has one. Okay. First hydrant flush. The water and wastewater department will conduct hydrant flushing starting Monday, April 3rd. It's a it's a bit of time from now, but we're going to say it a few times over and over so that people remember. The and you know what to expect. So the department begins up at the wastewater treatment plant on Fishco Road in Nelsonville and makes its way down to the bottom of the water district. It'll take about five days, should be done on Friday. And while they're being flushed, you will experience, excuse me, residents surrounding that particular hydrant might experience low water pressures and discolored water, so try to avoid doing laundry when the trucks are in your area if you can. That will reduce and use the water as little as you can, that'll help you avoid having water pulled into your household from that, from the hydrant system.
What do you do again?
April 3rd through April 7th. Another roadway announcement on the March 16th, so next Thursday, residents of Fishkill Road and Mountain Avenue should expect to see surveyors on their blocks. It's the first step in planning roadway repairs in that area. There will be crews with cameras scoping storm drains, sewer lines, water lines to document existing subsurface conditions. And they don't expect any significant traffic delays, but you will see folks out doing that work. Laura, you have a CCA update?
Yeah, so we're in the period of education and exploring, the village exploring. Sort of joining again to the CCA, the Community Choice Aggregation along with other municipalities. So Jewel has issued a request or proposals for electricity suppliers. They're due the 21st. We have a short time, about a week to review that, review the, our few responses and the pricing and then make a decision as a municipality, whether we want to participate again. So my understanding is that we will discuss this on the March 22nd, at the March 22nd board meeting and encourage residents to provide their feedback to us at that meeting or, or in writing. It is a, you know, a short window where we'll be making that decision.
And a bit out of sequence, but in line with that, I'll say thank you to the town of Phillips Town hosted us last week for a session hearing a report from the public utility law program on the Central Hudson billing debacle. It was incredibly informative. There were folks there from the village who gave descriptions of the particular problems that they have had, and I think it sort of makes the argument even stronger to join the buying power of CCA.
So. And just to say on that, I wasn't able to go, but I watched it on YouTube afterwards. So it's up on the town YouTube and it's riveting. I mean, it's like, you know, it's like prime time TV of the stories that you hear. So it's, it's time where it's spent.
Well, yeah, the $18,000 billing experience on South South Mountain Pass was quite something. Okay. Reports from village departments, we do not have the accountant with us tonight. Jeff, do you have any messages from Michelle other than leave me alone to get the budget done? Michelle is headlong in preparing the, the first draft, the preliminary budget, which is due the week of the 20th, we'll be discussing it then. So she's, she's very, very busy with that. Do we have Bugsy with us?
No. Fine. We don't have anybody.
Anybody with us tonight, it's just us. So I would just say all of these reports are available online. We're not going to read through all of them tonight, but I will say that if you have a look at the roadways and facilities department report, it is packed full for the last month. They have broken out their report by, by roadways, facilities, and then what they've been doing to maintain the fleet. And I will say it ranges from everything to catch basin, from catch basin cleanouts to assisting hell thing with the field prep at Mayor's Park. They've been working their backsides off through regular work and storms and grateful. Okay. Um. Roadways and facility, I'm sorry, water and wastewater. The big item to report was the upcoming hydrant flushing. Jeff, do you have an update for us on the metering of the endpoint update?
They're done. I mean, Saks has come, they've gone. There are approximately 35, give or take one or two, either way that have not been addressed or completed. I spoke to John first about enforcement, what we can do. He suggested we update the code, he's given me language for that, so I will incorporate that and then hopefully next week have a resolution to set a public hearing for the code update for water.
Well, the, the number is much lower than we expected it to be, so I'm really glad to hear that.
Yeah, we put the bid out, it was for 866 endpoints to be replaced. They did 828. And there were some from the H66 that came off the list because they already had newer endpoints that need to be there for whatever reason, so we're at 98% completion rate.
Okay. Building department, it's winter, it's slow. $375 in fees collected this month for a budget year total so far of 18,773. Anything in particular, Jeff, from you on buildings?
Nope.
Enforcement, I should say. Police department. Very unusual for the officer in charge not to be able to attend, but he couldn't this evening. So he asked that I pass along a couple of things. The number of false alarms is high for this month, but he reports that it is not, we've had, we've had problems in the past with repeated false alarms at particular properties. These are actually across several properties, so not an indication of an alarm problem at a particular location. So that's a good thing. On April 6th and 7th, the police department will be updating its CPR and Narcan training and having a session, because our team is part-time, it's not often that they're all together in one room or most of them are together in one room. So while they're all together, they're going to be also meeting with the executive director of the HUD for ongoing training related to operations with the support system through HUD. So. Fire Company is here because they just show up, they always do when you call. Do Phillips with us?
Um, it's kind of an easy month for us, 13 calls, hated them, we're neutralized, whether it was North Island or Garrison. Upcoming drills, we're going to be focusing on like walkthroughs, like Spring Brook, places like that. So it's going to be Tuesday evening, so people that live there, if you see us, don't be alarmed. We've been in contact with the owners and everything, so.
We're good as well.
Yeah, all of them, Butterfield, the schools, pretty much every big property that we might forget what it looks like. So.
You just out of curiosity, do you have, I've been thinking how complex the school is for first responders. Do you all have floor plans?
Uh, that's a, it's because it's a school, that's not something that like they want to openly share.
Got it.
Just because of.
When you do these orientations, you familiarize?
Yeah, we know where all the important stuff is.
I imagine a number of you are also.
Yeah.
Helping grads too. I, I did not know that that was, that you also went into the apartment developments, good to know.
Not inside the buildings, but just.
In the complex, it's right to be oriented. Thanks, you also had a couple of suggestions for people on your report. Did you want to share those? Clean out your dryer, your lint filter.
It's a different report, sorry. Yeah, make sure your drawers are clean. And another one's like your bathroom ceiling fan. A lot of fire stuff. It's actually, they get pretty nasty.
Thank you.
Change batteries this weekend.
Yeah, don't forget to change batteries and change clocks. Next weekend, it's coming up.
Last time was almost.
No. This Sunday?
Very exciting, can't wait. You can't delay lasting in the sky for longer. And it feels good. Justice Court, income of $5,703 for the member. HTRB, Jeff, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna turn HTRB to you, you attended their meeting last night unless Sean had joined us in the meantime.
He has not. This is for February, they had a public hearing for two-story addition at 12 Parrot Street. They approved that.
And that you said that there was an update on design standards last night, right?
Well, they are trying to complete them. Then there's a May 31st deadline to have it done at the end of the budget year.
Yep. Uh, planning board, um, the planning board has done this with us. Oh, hi, Jack. Good. Take it away.
Oh, no, I, I have nothing to add, I'm just sitting in, nothing to add.
Make any notes from your board?
Huh?
You want to make any notes from your board? You're what you are currently reviewing.
Oh, yeah. Yes, and we're supposed to take up the final application for it tomorrow night, 37th fair for the transfer of the village property. So we'll be reporting back to you on that. I don't foresee any sort of difficulties with it at this point, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Zoning Board has not met, so there is no update from them, but I will say that Eric Worth and the rest of the C ad hoc working group on the code update, Laura included, we're all, we're screaming toward deadlines and getting good work done. Eric's skills as an editor are invaluable. But looking forward to sharing drafts with our standing boards and then on to the public. Tree Advisory Board did not submit a report this month, and they did hold a public hearing last week regarding the removals, I was made or not, but I will also note that Jen Swarick and Bugsy and I met in the field last month, where there are sidewalk and tree conflicts. Jen and Bugsy have prioritized those locations that need attention sooner rather than later. Those that can be attended with alternate treatments, other materials, et cetera, on sidewalks where we can extend life of the trees will be done. So I expect that the tree advisory board will be discussing that in its regular meeting. I'm not sure if it's next week or the week after, and then making some formal recommendations to us as trustees to consider as part of our budgeting. Okay, Rec, do you want tweets, do you want to do, I don't see Jeff, you want to let us know what's going on with Rec?
Sure, um, so the latest is that we, that Jeff reached out to all three of the folks who previously submitted bids for the construction on the basketball court. And now that we have the go-ahead in terms of budget to proceed, we're just getting more information and more updated version of the, of the bids. There was a little bit of a slowdown because of winter and getting information on materials and such. So we should have more completed information, I think by next week. We are looking at doing resurfacing the basketball court as well as doing some sort of community slash creative thinking ways of painting the lines on the basketball court and also painting lines for at pickleball court as well. We'll do seeding, seeding as in like for seeds for grass around the court, because that also needs to be done. And it's all moving along really nicely and should be able to be completed for this budget year, so that's great. The other news that he wanted me to convey is that there is another person who's interested in joining the rec mission. So we should be at full capacity in the next couple of weeks, which is great, and there's a lot of new blood and new excitement and things are moving at pace with that, so that's great. The final thing is just the review of the the code for the recreation committee, looking at sort of working on the, on the language, but also including kind of a mission statement for what the recreation committee is going to be for future, so that it actually has like a real sort of mission, a mission-driven agenda moving forward versus just kind of being really good-hearted folks who come in and put up Christmas lights in the winter and take care of everything else in terms of activities at our, at our facilities and events and such. So I think that's going to be a great, a great change to, to the work that they're doing, and that's pretty much it.
So shifting toward more proactive planning in our parks.
Yes.
More active use of the parks.
Yes.
Great. And speaking of more active use of our parks, we have the event coordinator, Lillian Moser here with us tonight. We have an application before us for the much beloved night in Columbus Easter egg hunt, April 1st, rain or snow, we'll shift into April 8th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, anything that you'd like us to know from your review?
I've vetted it out to all the departments. Roadways and facilities came back with a concern that they thought that the tree advisory board had about some of the limbs in Mayor's Park. After consulting with Jen Swarick, she said that that was going to be resolved prior to April 1st. So we're good to go with that as long as you guys are good to go with it.
And have you received the insurance certificate yet?
Insurance certificate isn't.
All right, question or discussion among board members? Okay, I would make a motion to approve the Easter egg hunt on April 1st, rain or snow date, April 8th. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I, and how do you vote no, Tony Strike? Thank you, Lillian. We do not have Bob with us, I think the entire village is at the basketball game at O'Neill's tonight. We're, I think we're all wishing we were there too, but I'm, I'm sure that's where Bob is. Let's see, quick notes from the town, thank them again for hosting us. Looking for new, has to proclamation from Mateo Servone last week for scoring thousand points in his high school career. It was really kind of funny, Eliza and I were there, supervisor looked about this big next to Goliath.
He looked like that on YouTube as well.
Pretty impressive. Um. That's, that's most, most of what relates to the village. Still accepting folks to participate in the food scrap program, you can do that via the town's website. The legislature, legislator has a meeting tonight that she sent the following information, there's a free rabies clinic on March 25th from 10 to 2:00 in the upper park of Veterans Memorial Park, 201 Gypsy Trail Road in Carmel. It's actually you sort of veered to the left just before you go over the stone bridge and into Carmel, parks back that way. Residents with dogs, cats and ferrets are encouraged to bring their pets and a photo ID as proof of residency along with a pet's certificate of proof of prior vaccination. Tags are not acceptable, you need the actual documentation from the vet. And pets who have not had a previous vaccination will get a one-year shot rather than a three-year vaccination. Putnam County has enacted 10% property tax exemption for volunteer ambulance workers and firefighters in Putnam County. This is a enabling legislation from the state. We will take it up here in the village. Michelle Escalillo, the village accountant is in initial conversations with the town assessor, see what we need to do to get it on our books for last, for, for next year. The legislation came out of Albany right at the end of the, right at the end of the year, and there wasn't a ton of time to get it enacted for this year at our level, but we can, we'll certainly have that in place for the board discussion for next tax season. And thank you to Fire Company for the information you've been sending from Faust on that. I guess now to us. Who's at the start, mayor and board of trustees reports?
Some kind of showing stuff, work I'm working on, so the parking plan I could talk about now or just go for it, alright. So signage has been sent out for bids, we're waiting for, you know, the bids to come in. We've gotten one. We just need the other two to come in.
Revised bid.
Yeah, revised bid before the village board can review it and pick which company to go with. But the list is out there, it's completed and signs are, are almost ready to order. I'm working on code updates with the mayor for chapter 126, traffic and vehicles and 127 resident permit, parking permit program. The first draft has been passed and we're working together to sort of update it, so that we have a draft that meets all the legal requirements. We'll be reviewing with John first and then we'll bring it to the board and the public to review in a public meeting. And then we'll move on to doing the public hearing on that, so that's a few weeks out. Um, I've been looking for kiosks, parking meter kiosks to go on Main Street and to try and get the one that was at the municipal lot back installed. Um, I've gotten bids from a couple of companies for that and the pricing seems pretty consistent between the companies, but I did get ahold of the company that did the original, the kiosk that we had. They said they can reinstall it for a fee and get more kiosks if we want to go with their service for Main Street as well. So we'll get a three-for-one kind of deal in that situation, which is great.
And.
Yep.
Yes, um, so I was thinking that we were just going to do the app-based, so is the plan to do both so that?
Yeah, so we're, we're investigating getting the kiosks and budgeting that in with the what we have left from the fund balance because what we kind of realized was when the municipal lot changed from kiosk metering to only app metering, we, people stopped paying. So we lost a ton of revenue and it's a really big loss opportunity, even though the kiosk costs a bit to put them in place. If we want this parking plan to actually generate the kind of revenue that we're expecting, we need to make it as easy as possible for people to pay. So anybody who doesn't have a, you know, smartphone or isn't phone savvy or doesn't have service or whatever, there are excuses for why people won't use the app, but if there's a kiosk on the street, they could always pay.
Yeah.
And what I'm looking at is kiosks that are solar powered, so no electric hookup that only take credit cards so that we don't have to fiddle with cash and collections of cash from the machines. And that's pretty much it. And that, that will work with the app service as well. So it'll be all integrated. I'm also looking into the handheld devices for enforcement and ticket printing. I've got a couple bids on that, I'm waiting for more information. This is really cool technology, so I can't wait to tell you guys about it. I'll tell you more about it when we're looking at the bid in front of us. Um. Then I've also been working on bidding out village cleaning services for the budget. Met with two different cleaning services with the mayor and she's helping me also show them around all the facilities. It could be the first time probably ever that, that. If we can make the budget work, that our facilities will be cleaned and, you know, if you saw some of the spaces that our village employees are working in, it's, it's reasonable. So they shouldn't have to do that. So hopefully we'll get that done. And I'm also working on getting the subway tunnel painted. The highway department has been working with Metro North to plug up all the holes. It's still dribbling a little bit, but mostly it's done and honestly, it may always have a little bit of a dribble, but we can't live with the tunnel how it is, so we should get it painted. I'm hoping to get it painted by April 22nd for incorporation day, called Green Bloom. So I'm, you know, looking for a contractor that can prime it. I'm also looking into ceilings because there are like polyurethanes you can coat the whole mural with that are anti-graffiti, so they can pressure wash off. The graffiti, it's expensive, but it's worth putting that coat on and then we can always clean it and we won't have to live with graffiti forever. Or repaint the tunnel every year.
Worth a shot.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I'm, I'm looking into these options and getting bracing. Pre-tick cleanup. A meeting with Jen Swarick and the, of the tree advisory board. Aaron Muir, who's our tree pit garden volunteer manager and Aaron Murphy from the chamber to get a mulching day done. And all the tree pits cleaned up and, and we're going to talk about, you know, discuss how we can get them planted as well. On a side note, when I met with the roadways and facility crew chief and, and Michelle to do the budget review for that department, they said they have a mountain of mulch. And if the village wanted to, well, we could definitely use it for tree pits, but if we wanted to do like a village-wide pickup, like mulching day and let people bring a flash can and fill it up and mulch their yards, that's something that we could do, so.
This is a, um, if you're talking about, I think you're talking about, this is a result of Bugsy and the crew having really invested in organizing the yard. After he did, we had a sort of a mentoring session with him and the crew chief in Kent. The, excuse me, the highway superintendent in Kent, and he made some recommendations about better managing the yard and optimizing space and resources. So the guys spent some of the winter moving things around. I think that's where, there was, there was more back there than, there were more resources back there than we realized.
Right, so this is something maybe the board could discuss, but if we wanted to create a community mulching day, it would be kind of a neat thing to do.
I didn't realize there was that much.
There's like 15 yards in a giant dumpster and we've got a pile as well. So there's a lot mulched, but you have to go somewhere. He's been pushing it to, to sort of fill in holes in the lot and like smooth things out with it. But he said he has plenty to share.
Oh, good to know.
Actually for me. Yeah, he does, he's open to having people come down and.
And we have to work out, we'd have to work out a pickup day because we can't have people going on and off the site unsupervised, but we can.
Right.
Bugsy that up. Thank you, Eliza has been working her tail off, it should be noted for the record.
Just the ongoing Big Belly thing. I've sent two emails, left my phone number, now tomorrow, I'm going to just, but you said you.
I got, I got three bids today.
You got three bids, so then.
So we, so Big Belly, the gentleman who was, who we were contacting, contacting was on vacation, so I followed up with the info number. And another person agreed to prepare the bid and then Jeff and I looked into sort of reviews of companies, other companies and just sort of sent emails, polled and got a few numbers stuck with us, figure out how comparable they are in terms of software, et cetera. But I would love to be able to deal with that this budget year.
I did, I was in Roundback last week and because I had reached out to try and find out how they did. But right on the thing, it's apparently some foundation or some.
They have a bid, I think.
I don't know, it looked like somebody donated them from the plaque on the.
Right, but I think that Roundback has a, has a bid that.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm not sure, but I think. Um, okay. Laura, you gave CCA, anything else you want us to know? You've been working a damn stuff with me.
Damn, D-A-M. And chapter 134, but one other thing to mention. We got approval from NYSERDA for our first $5,000 clean energy grant. That came through very easily with a great concept to give, which is to update the lighting at the water or wastewater plant, the LEDs, so, and the money that we'll save with having more efficient lighting, then we can put into the, all the needed repairs that we have at those plants, so we will get some estimates and move that forward. I think Matt's really pleased about, that's been on his list for a while.
Yeah, that's it, that building is an energy hog.
Yeah, it's the, they're the two buildings that use the most energy of all our municipal buildings.
Well done you, good use. Let's see, for me, I think for all of us, it's all budget, all the time in pursuit of. No, just. Oh, please. Please. Any updates from you? Any updates from you? She's saying yes. Thank you.
No. My update was Rick.
Be with Rick.
I was looking for the mute button. Apparently it disappeared for a minute. Sorry about that.
Um. Yeah, it's a dramatic pause. So yeah, it's all budget all the time. I think everybody's scrambling to help Michelle um pull numbers together, including our department heads. So thank you to everybody for that. Performance appraisals are out um among the teams. Uh, we have department heads meeting in the morning and expect that folks will be bringing them in. Um, and then I need to follow up with the department heads, schedule with them. Um, Laura has told us about the CCA. Um, we have secured the small gym at Hal Lane for a public meeting related to the Fier Trail Thursday, April thirteenth at seven P M. Um, the trustees of the two village boards, Nelsonville, Cold Spring will attend. Um, the town was supposed to meet tonight, um, and they were gonna discuss it this evening, but they canceled for this evening, so that board will take up um, the meeting next week and details on an agenda, uh, agenda and format will follow. I had a really fun thing to do this week. Um, I read at the library, the Tots reading session on, it's Monday or Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Um, Lily and it's coming in next week to read um for Women's History Month. Um, it was a really, really good time. Um, and the children's librarian um had a request. She asked to carry forward to all of you. Um, they are doing a camp this summer um in which they would like to, as one of the camp activities, um, build and plan a little library proposal, um, like over on Chestnut Street. Um, they would like to put it at the waterfront and suggested a couple of locations. Um, wanted to run the idea by you first. I'd be good for them to work with H D R B and importantly, the tree advisory board to make sure that we're not damaging any roots down there. The locations they pick are sort of, uh, if you're standing, looking at the dock, um, they're looking to the, to the left of the dock or to the south. And there are a bunch of tree roots there that we should make sure we can work around. But first to ask trustees, how you feel about that proposal?
It's one of those one, one library, little cabinet.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I mean, I love that.
Great. I like that.
Also need to uh hook her up with um Bugsy to see if they can assist with digging. Okay, I'll do that then. Report, report back. Um. Can't say that it is. Oh, the chamber. Yes, that's how we've got a.
Yes.
It's next on the agenda anyway. Um, Cold Spring and Bloom. Hi, Erin.
Hi, how are you? Good evening.
Good to see you.
Yes, Cold Spring and Bloom. It's a year later, almost here. Um, so we got a little bit of initial planning going in our last Main Street um meeting and had discussed uh moving the date. Last year it was on a Friday. This year we were hoping to move it to actual Earth Day, which is a Saturday. Um, we discovered people really enjoy the trivia aspect and wanted a little bit more time to kind of enjoy the activities of the day. So um we're hoping with the village consent that we could hold this event on Earth Day um Saturday, April twenty-second, and it would really just be during business hours, um wrapping up around six P M. Um, it's a celebration of Earth Day, uh, the blossoming of spring, and of course, the history of Cold Spring. Um, so in collaboration again with the Putnam History Museum, we're gonna bring back the Village Trivia Hunt where um the Main Street storefronts put posters in their windows. It was really fun. Um, they were able to, you know, tell different uh patrons about what was happening previously in their building. Um, what other businesses had been there and they, Putnam History Museum also um had posted different trivia, um, old photos of um historical Cold Springs throughout um Main Street, so you could really s- take a peek into the history, which was really fun. Um, another thing that we're hoping, because we did kick that off last year as uh Eliza touched on a little bit, was we had a number of volunteers come out and clean up the tree pits. There was a lot of mulching happening and then in the fall, um, through the donation of the bulbs to the chamber, we are, we planted, a group came and through Erin Muir managing it, uh, came and planted all those bulbs, so we're really hoping that those blossom in time, um, which is looking good. Jessica Zoric um from the Tree Committee thought that we would definitely have some blooms coming for this event and the only other addition to kind of um add to it and keep it growing, um, is that Sue Costigan from Endless Scheme um has been coordinating a tapestry project, which essentially um, correct me if I'm wrong, Eliza, but essentially is uh temperature tapestries um that date back, well, they're looking at the history from anywhere from nineteen hundred to current uh temperatures and they show um, you know, different decades of the temperature and timelines. They're also gonna include facts and these have been crocheted or um what was it, knit together. So it's, I think, going to add a really beautiful pop of color to um, Main Street in addition to showing that history again. So there's that. And then, of course, all the stores are encouraged to host, you know, some kind of fun activity, sales, discounts, specials, um, so that it makes it a really fun day for families to come down and enjoy.
Two questions.
Yeah.
Where would, where would the tapestry be, will be displayed outside her building?
So the tap, there is approximately, she said, forty-five tapestries. Um, so what we're trying to do, which is incredible, honestly, um, what we're trying to do is organize through the businesses that plan to participate. Last year we had thirty-nine businesses. I'm hoping we have even more because we've had new additions to the community. Um, so I'm really hoping that we can get everybody who plans to participate to hang one of the tapestries in their front windows or however they can be prominently displayed. Um, they'll have that for the weekend, but then they will actually go on to a little bit uh longer-term display at the Putnam History Museum.
That is really cool.
You can see them all lined up and it's basically showing climate change through, through colors, which is really cool.
Amazing and utterly depressing at the same time. Um.
Beautiful.
Okay, cool. Um, and then are you gonna be doing our store owners going to be doing tables up front?
So, um, last year, I know we kind of touched on that a little bit. I think what will probably happen as long as, again, this works out for the village is that they may do, you know, their standard three-feet table or sale rack or something. Um, I know that the Putnam History Museum would like, again, to probably have a booth out there. Um, and then I would assume that the chamber would also like to have a booth out there and that, um, just so that there's a point where everybody can come together um and get the trivia information and get any other, you know, historical or um information on the event that day.
I did, um, I did talk to Officer in Charge Burke. Um, he's excited about the event, comfortable with it. Just let him know if you want to do um stuff on the sidewalk so he can let the officer out of patrol know. And also Chief Phillips gave the thumbs up, so.
Great.
Questions from the board or?
Well, thank you so much for organizing it again, Erin.
Yeah, I'm excited. Year two. So hopefully it's just gonna bring that many more people out, especially on a Saturday. I'm hoping that that really um helps it out and it won't be as busy as, say, a fall event, so Saturday in a spring is a perfect time to enjoy this.
Well, and there hasn't been, there hasn't really been an Earth Day to do in some time in the village, so I'm, I'm really glad to see it coming back.
Yeah.
Um, so Jeff, do we need a vote to approve?
Yes.
So, would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the um proposal for Cold Spring and Bloom for April twenty-second, Saturday, and and just to make sure, Erin, there's the signage and stuff will be staying up all weekend, right? Saturday and Sunday?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so for Saturday through Sunday, April twenty-second and twenty-third this year. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Vote aye. Any opposed? Oopsie, did you?
I voted.
You did, okay. Um, good luck. Let us know if you need anything. If the History Museum wants to be in front of Village Hall again, just let us know in time to pull the, um, oh, we'll need to, let us know what day mulching is happening, so we, I'm assuming you want to um stage mulch from Village Hall again.
Yeah, I think that'll be a discussion we have in the next couple days. We'll certainly let you know.
We need to pull benches back if you want to use that spot again, so just give us enough time to get them out of the way.
And I'll, and I'll keep you posted if the Putnam History Museum plans to post up again with the chamber in front of Village Hall as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next um relates to the preparation of the tax roll. Um, the uh yearly vote we take to sign a contract with Putnam County um for them to prepare the twenty twenty-three Village, well, whatever year it is, we vote every year for the preparation of village tax rolls and bills. Um, this is a resolution authorizing me to enter that contract. Would someone like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution O six twenty twenty-three, authorizing mayor to sign a contract with Putnam County Real Property for the preparation of the two thousand thirteen village tax roll and bills.
Twenty-three.
Yep. Um, the following resolution is offered by myself for adoption and seconded by
Second.
Um, to which, whereas the Putnam County Real Property Tax Service has tendered a proposed contract to the village providing for certain services in regard to the preparation of the village's twenty twenty-three tax roll and bills. And whereas the village board finds that it is the best, in the best interests of the village to enter the said contract, now therefore is hereby resolved that the village board does approve the proposed contract, a copy of which is attached here too. And number two, the mayor is authorized to execute said agreement and any documents necessary for its implementation on roll call vote.
Trustee Bosie.
Hi.
Trustee Fatty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Woods.
Hi.
And Mayor Foley.
Hi. Thank you.
We adopted today by a vote of five zero.
Um, a couple things you reminded me of on county, the um state of the county address is Thursday night, Monday, um, at the county courthouse. Um, I believe it starts at seven. Um, and if you're interested in going out, you need to RSVP on the county website. And the other county item was ARPA, the um intermunicipal agreements. Uh, the county, the village attorney has been back and forth a bit with the um the county attorney on some fine details of our ARPA contract, but we should have that, I hope, sealed up in the next week so that we can get those funds and get the uh, the water filters upgraded. Um, so nearly there on that one. Okay, the last relates to that meeting we had last week um with the towns. Um, and this resolution um is a resolution to support um the actions of the Public Service Commission um in the New York State Senate Committee on Investigations and Government Operations um to ask them to please, yes, address the harms caused um to folks all, all across the Central Hudson area and for us particularly, folks in the village of Cold Spring, um customers in the village of Cold Spring. So uh Laura is going to read this one into the record. It's a long one, so buckle up.
Question zero seven twenty twenty-three, supporting actions by the New York State Public Service Commission and New York State Senate Committee on Investigations and Government Operations to address harms caused to the village of Cold Spring, Central Hudson Utility customers as a result of widespread billing problems. The valuing resolution was offered by Laura Bosie for adoption and seconded by
Meek.
To wit, whereas the village of Cold Spring is located in the service territory of the Central Hudson Gas and Electric Corporation, where Central Hudson is the only regulated transmission and utility and distribution utility serving the village of Cold Spring as provider of electric and natural gas. Where the village of Cold Spring values the work of Central Hudson in maintaining transmission lines and restoring electricity to residents from downlines as quickly as possible. Whereas residents of the village of Cold Spring have been experiencing problems with bills issued by Central Hudson for utility service, which is receiving no bills for several, for several months at a time, receiving multiple bills per month with different amounts due and issues with estimated billing, inaccurate billing, budget billing, and uncharacteristically high bills. Whereas on March second twenty twenty-three, a joint public meeting was held between the village of Cold Spring, the town of Phillips Town, and the village of Nelsonville, where residents were provided a form to share their personal stories about Central Hudson's billing issues in the air presentation by the Public Utility Law Project, the Department of Public Services, on the Department of Public Services investigation into the company. Whereas one resident of the cul- of the village of Cold Spring voiced concern about their credit rating because they are currently at risk of defaulting on a loan they have through NYSERDA that was used to install insulation, of which payments are supposed to be made through their Central Hudson bill. Those believe that due to ongoing billing issues, the company has failed to pay NYSERDA for the loan for approximately eleven months. Whereas the same resident has spent approximately thirteen total hours on hold with Central Hudson in an effort to discuss and resolve their concerns of the company, but often being disconnected after an hour of waiting. And whereas the same resident voiced concern about their account failing to have any usage history after May twenty twenty-two, even though they've lived at the same home for over eight years, leading this resident confused about the accuracy of their account. And whereas the second resident of the village of Cold Spring asked about uh what the impact was on bills from the termination of community choice aggregation that happened on or around August or May twenty-two, while also explaining that she still occasionally receives bills through Next Amp between a solar provider who engages in billing with Central Hudson. Whereas these billing problems have caused confusion, frustration, and financial hardship for village residents, whereas Central Hudson has often failed to satisfactorily address these billing problems. Whereas the billing problems experienced by customers that Hudson Valley within Central Hudson service area have resulted in numerous complaints being filed with the New York uh State Public Service Commission. Whereas the P S C has launched three investigations into Central Hudson in twenty twenty-two. There's one investigation focused on customer service and billing issues. And whereas the P S B released an investigative report in December of twenty twenty-two that determined that said billing problems, that said problems in billing are a direct result of Central Hudson's upgrade to its customer information and billing system on September first twenty twenty-one. And whereas the P S C said report from the Central Hudson put its upgraded customer information and billing system into operation despite having information indicating that first deficiencies in training, testing, overall readiness rendered the system incapable of handling complex billing scenarios. And second, the system still contained hundreds of programming errors and defects. And whereas the P S E report found that Central Hudson affirmatively represents that it has spent over eighty-eight million dollars on this upgrade to its customer information and billing system, and it is estimated that Central Hudson's rate payers will have paid uh twenty-one million dollars toward the project through increased billing fees through June thirtieth twenty twenty-three. Whereas the New York State Senate Committee on Investigations and Government Operations report states uh that the committee will monitor the enforcement proceedings and assess if clarifying legislations needed to ensure proper penalties are levied and funds are redirected back to customers harmed by systemic billing failures. Now, therefore, the result is follows. One, that the village board encourages residents who have experienced billing problems with Central Hudson and who have unsuccessfully tried to resolve such problems with Central Hudson to file a complaint with the New York State Department of Public Services Office of Consumer Services and thereby to seek direct resolution of their individual customer problem or concern. And two, that the village board supports the P L C taking action to ensure that no further money collected from Central Hudson rate payers from the failed upgrade to its customer information and billing system. And three, that the P S C determines that imposition of fines against Central Hudson are justified. The village board supports the P S C imposing such fines, remitting the funds generated thereby uh to customers of Central Hudson who have been harmed by the aforementioned billing problems. And four, that the village board supports the New York State Senate Committee on Investigations and Government Operations adopting legislation if necessary to ensure proper penalties are levied against Central Hudson. The funds are redirected back to customers harmed by sys- uh systematic billing failures. And five, that a certified copy of this resolution shall be sent to the P S C, the New York State Senate Committee on Investigations and Government Operations, and the village's state senator and assembly member.
Trustee Bosie.
Hi.
Trustee Fatty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Woods.
Hi.
Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Officially adopted on this date by a vote of five zero.
Um, Jeff, is the uh, yes, thank you very much. Is the um set of slides and the link to the meeting up on our website yet?
Not yet.
Okay, soon. Um, it is up on the town's website, the link to the slides last week, which gives very specific instructions for how to file complaints, um, if you haven't done so yet. Um, and there is also a link to watch the, the session with Paul, if you'd like. We'll get that up on our website as soon as we can. And there is also a link to watch the, the session with Paul, if you'd like. We'll get that up on our website as soon as we can. Are you trying to motion, Michael, or are you just tipping your head? Okay, hearing none. Motion to adjourn? Night Erin, night Michael, night Mary Ellen.